Good afternoon, calling the work session into, in the work session to order. Can I have a motion to go into special voting session?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, passage of an ordinance, city of Hagerstown general obligation debt and ordinance.
Madam Mayor, we move for the passage of an ordinance authorizing city of Hagerstown to sell an issue from time to time upon its full faith and credit in one or more series. One, A, general obligation bonds and B, general obligation bond anticipation notes bands, each in an original aggregate principal amount not to exceed ten point six million. And two, general obligation refunding bonds and an original aggregate principal amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty percent of the aggregate principal amount of any bonds being refunded. Proceeds of any such issued bonds, bands of refunding bonds will be used to finance reimbursement, refinance costs as defined in the ordinance with respect to a project generally referred to as parking fund, parking facilities, third parking deck, the project. Any series of such general obligation bonds, bands of refunding bonds may be issued as a single obligation in drawdown form and/or as an installment obligation. The ordinance provides that before issuance of any such authorized general obligation bonds, bands or refunding bonds, the council must determine or provide for details of the issue by resolution. Staff is hereby directed to work with the city's financial advisor and bond counsel to develop and circulate an RFP to national and regional financial institutions for the sale of a series of bands and a direct purchase transaction in order to provide interim financing for the project with bonds to be issued at a later date to provide long-term financing for the project and develop the necessary detailed resolution and other documents relating to the bands.
Second. Discussion, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have a proclamation for Poetry Month. So Angel and Honey, and that's the judge right here. Nice, alright, I am going to read the proclamation. Whereas, to support American poets at all ages of their careers and to foster appreciation of contemporary poetry, in nineteen ninety-six, the Academy of American Poets established the month of April as National Poetry Month, the largest literary celebration in the world. And, whereas, poetry enhances and enriches our lives, fosters critical thinking, discipline, creativity, self-expression, problem-solving skills, has inspired other artists in the field of music, creative film, dance and visual arts. And, whereas, National Poetry Month seeks to highlight the extraordinary legacy and ongoing achievement of American poets. Introduce Americans to pleasures and benefits of reading poetry, brings poets to poetry in the public immediately, immediate innovative ways and make poetry an important part of our children's education. And, whereas, the theme for twenty twenty-three is always be a poet, even in prose. Now therefore, I, Teteia Martinez, mayor and poet of the city of Hagerstown, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-three as National Poetry Month and call upon our citizens to celebrate, support and promote poetry in our city. And I want especially I ask both of you guys to come because you teach young people. And so I, I just thank you, thank you for being poets in the community, thank you for working with Stitcher Peace Poets and thank you for working with Fresh Academics and the seeds, thank you so much for serving the community. Is that saying?
Um, I would just like to say, um, thank you, this is such a great, um, experience, it's been a great experience to work with the youth, it's been a great experience to work with Stitcher Peace and it's been a great and wonderful experience to be accepted by you and I appreciate that, so, thank you.
Yeah, I recently moved to Hagerstown over two years ago and joined Fresh Academics and I can say that the hip-hop that we are making there is positive impact, that is impacting Hagerstown every day and we're not gonna stop, we have more things for this city. So if you guys could join, join, come out to our events, uh, see what we're doing, see the poetry, see the rhymes that are uplifting, they're all, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Eric's gonna take a picture of us.
There we go.
Awesome.
Yep.
Yeah, we heard you. Yeah, let's go this way. Okay, and good smiles, and one, two, three, okay?
Thank you, thank you both.
Yep.
The next up, we have a proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Mic check, mic check? One, two, one, two. It's, the green light is on, it's on the screen, it's, aye.
Aye.
So, proclamation. Whereas, Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member of the city of Hagerstown. And, whereas, rape, sexual assault, sexual harassment impact our community is seen by statistics from the Maryland Coalition Against Sexual Assault. Twenty-one point three percent of adult women in Maryland have experienced, um, have experienced completed or attempted rape. Or attempted rape, and forty-four percent of women and twenty-four point eight percent of men in Maryland have experienced other forms of sexual violence. And, whereas, we must work together to educate our community about what can be done to prevent sexual assault and how to support survivors. Staff and volunteers of anti-violence programs at and in the city of Hagerstown encourage every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence however small. And, whereas, through prevention, education and increased awareness, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence in the city of Hagerstown and hold perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. And, whereas, the city of Hagerstown strongly supports the efforts of national, state and local partners of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversation about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services and how every segment of our society can work together, together to better address sexual violence. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city of Hagerstown, the mayor and council of the city of Hagerstown, Maryland, do hereby recognize April twenty twenty-three as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and encourage all of our citizens to join anti-sexual violence advocates and support service programs in belief that all community members must be a part of the solution to end sexual violence. Thank you guys for the work that you do. Do you have to say anything?
Thank you. Um, so I guess you've heard some of the Maryland statistics, but just nationwide, um, RAIN, which is the largest anti-sexual violence organization, states that an American is sexually assaulted every sixty-eight seconds, um, every nine minutes that is a child. So, just, we thank you guys for your time and for supporting CASA in, uh, you know, acknowledging and bringing awareness through the month of April. Um, please know that CASA A is there to serve all survivors of sexual assault, um, sex trafficking. And, um, please share that if you know anyone that might need those services and so they're aware of the resources in our community. Thank you.
Just thank you for having us.
Thank you for doing a very important work, but you feel, thank you very much, thank you. And Eric's gonna come in and take a picture. There he is.
Okay, and good smiles, and one, two, three, okay?
Next up, we have National Pike Festival and James Shaw Wagon Train Foundation, we have Chad Walker, secretary and treasurer. Hi Chad, welcome back.
Thank you for having me, um, the Corporation of Hagerstown this evening. Uh, first, I wanted to start off by stating that there was a typo in the letter that I had sent to you. It is a general format that I use for all the towns. Uh, where it says for the town of Funkstown, it should say the Corporation of Hagerstown gravel lot up top in the city park. Uh, so that, that's the first thing I would like to address.
I was wondering if they were gonna come in and help, but, um, they probably would.
They probably would if you asked him. Uh, the second thing I would like to present to the Corporation of Hagerstown, I'm, last year was the first year that the fire department helped us with water at the, uh, city park. They had a drop tank where they offloaded into that drop tank and we bucketed water out. Uh, we would like to present to the Corporation of Hagerstown to, uh, potentially have that provided to us, uh, again this year. I, I don't think the fire chief is here this evening, but if some-
I'll take care of it.
Okay.
Did that work out last week?
It worked out great.
Good.
I think we used about a quarter, they had it full and I think we used a quarter to a half. Uh, it was very hot last year, so any water was appreciated. I mean, we did have two hundred and fifty gallons of water on the trailer, but it helped. Uh, the second thing I would like to, um, present to the Corporation of Hagerstown this evening, uh, we would like to create a new stop along our journey. Uh, this is something that me and the president have thought long and hard about. Uh, we would want to get the towns involved, more involved. Uh, we would like to create a new stop in front of the Maryland Theater. We would like to stop in the right-hand lane for about ten minutes, uh, traffic, uh, using discretion of the city police, auxiliary police and deputy sheriffs that travel with us, may or may not be able to use that left lane unless it's an emergency vehicle. That is at the discretion of them, uh, during the weekend. Uh, but we would like to stop there only because the Convention and Visitors Bureau this year is offering to pay for a professional photographer to get, uh, different photos throughout the different towns, uh, and videos of us like coming into the square, um, and, and turning right there at the Maryland Theater. Uh, this is a prime opportunity not only for the Corporation of Hagerstown, uh, but it is a prime opportunity for the National Pike Festival and James Shaw Wagon Train as RFD TV and other national, uh, opportunities have reached out to us this year for next year to promote and advertise on live TV for free. So the Convention and Visitors Bureau is willing to pay for the photographer so we can get professional photography and videography and that's one stop that we would like to add this year. Um, so I would like to present that to, uh, the mayor and council.
I have any questions?
Talk to, yeah, I'll take care of that too for you.
Okay, and that is also on our road permit that I've submitted to the state highway administration.
Okay.
Uh, the third thing, uh, concluding, uh, this evening that we would like to ask, uh, last year was the first year that Corporation of Hagerstown was able to help offset costs as we are a nonprofit five oh one C three using, uh, funds from the Hotel Motel Funds. Uh, we have presented it to the town of Funkstown, they have presented five hundred dollars to us. I have the, uh, town of Clear Spring next Tuesday and the town of Boonsborough next Monday that I will be sending, be presenting to ask them, uh, to help offset costs, uh, for the scholarship fund, uh, each year. I will be presenting to them for different, uh, different uses. I'm presenting to the town of Boonsborough for the use of the rental van that they paid for last year and the town of Clear Spring will help for the van that is going to be in Clear Spring on Friday night. Um, so I'm presenting to the Corporation of Hagerstown to, uh, see if there is any funds available in the Hotel Motel to help us offset the, uh, expensive, uh, cost to keep this going.
So you're asking for five hundred for, from each town, is that correct? We did, did we do five hundred last year?
You did five hundred last year.
I mean, it's fine with me, it's fine with me.
Yeah, I'm sure we did five, five, right?
I think so, yeah. Yeah, I mean, you're, I mean, you're coming through the city and, yeah.
And we're, we're, we're trying our best to actively, uh, six years, seven years ago, me and Stephen took it over because it was gonna fold, not financially, but there, the people that were doing it were older and they were burnt out. Uh, we feel it's very educational to keep this going as Route Forty is the road that built America from east to west or west to east, goes right through our towns, Clear Spring, Boonsborough, you know, uh, Hagerstown. Um, so we're trying actively to work with the mayor and councils to create more involvement within the community and more stops. And, you know, uh, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, they're paying for our birth shores, uh, you know, they're taking it to all the rest stops. We're trying to make this event, you know, as big as possible, uh, you know, a- as this is mainly how our, our roads were formed. I greatly appreciate your guys' time this evening.
Well, thank you, nice for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you Chad.
Chad, we'll be in touch just to confirm everything, okay?
Thank you very much, sir.
Next up is Children in Need presentation, Brittany Webb.
Hello, Brittany.
Hi Brittany.
I'm joined by our board president, Matt South. He's gonna be nanning the PowerPoint for me. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to be able to speak with you about our nonprofit organization. So we are with Children in Need. So the aim of Children in Need is to keep kids in school, um, from birth all the way up to college-age children and we do this by providing essential items such as clothing, toiletries, uh, personal hygiene products as well as school supplies and books among many other things. And this is important because, next slide. Um, in Washington County, fifty-seven point eight percent of all students who are enrolled in WCPS, they are living at the federally recognized poverty level or below and they qualify for the free and reduced lunch program. If you factor in pre-case students, it's actually sixty-three percent. So sixty-three percent of Washington County Public School students, uh, qualify for services through Children in Need. Next slide. And our services are important because children who don't have adequately fitting clothing or clothing that has holes and stains in it, if they don't have access to toiletries or personal health and hygiene items or even school supplies, they're more likely to be ostracized by their peers, bullied, um, they're more likely to skip school, they're also more likely to develop chronic health conditions. Um, and that's where Children in Need steps in. Um, I got a little bit ahead of myself, but there we go, next slide. So Children in Need has two main programs, we have our client services program. So every month, um, our clients on behalf of their children can come to the center and get clothing, toiletries and school supplies for their children. So for instance, if a Washington County family has a fifth grade student, um, they can come in and get three shirts, three jeans, uh, dress, uh, jackets throughout the year, they can get, uh, shoes rather, they can get an unlimited amount of books and school supplies and then we also provide shampoo, body wash, toothpaste, um, and feminine hygiene products throughout the year. And we currently serve over two thousand children here in Washington County. Um, and it's important to note too that in Hagerstown, we serve about six hundred families, uh, through our center. We also have our extended services program, which is near and dear to my heart. Um, so Washington County Public Schools can request on behalf of their students, uh, items, uh, from our center. So right now, we're seeing an increase in requests for pants, lice kits, um, because the schools are just experiencing that need. We have a lot of students that are experiencing accidents in school and, um, it's difficult for the schools and the families to be able to keep up with it. Uh, we also re- receive requests through CASA, we, um, we really enjoy partnering with them, but also Department of Social Services and that's why this is a, a near and dear program to my heart because that is myself and my sibling when we were in foster care and we were actually, um, recipients of clothing items through Children in Need as we aged through the system. So oftentimes, if you're in foster care, you know that you go into it often with the items that are on your back um, and you don't necessarily have school supplies either to be able to continue going to school. So our services definitely support them. Um, we also help families who have experienced, um, fires or just domestic violence. Uh, we're seeing a lot of extended services requests for children who are removed from homes due to the opioid epidemic um, and they're placed with their grandparents, so we receive a lot of requests through that. Um, next slide. We also have multiple programs throughout the year, we have our back-to-school vouchers, so we partner with, um, Walmart and we receive funding through the Washington County Government to be able to provide vouchers to our clients. They can go to Walmart and purchase a brand-new backpack, a brand-new outfit for school. Um, and last year, we did about twenty-three thousand dollars worth of back-to-school vouchers for our clients. Um, we also have our One Foot Up program, so we partner with Julie Gaver of Souls for Love um, and we distribute brand-new pairs of shoes to our clients. So this past year, we distributed seventeen hundred pairs of shoes to Washington County kids. Um, we also partner with the Mails on Wheels program in Meredith's. So Mails on Wheels, Wheels rather, we are located, um, at the Martin Luther King, uh, building next to the Robert Johnson Center. So we're a Mails on Wheels site and we feed about a hundred kids a day during the summer. Um, and that's a really phenomenal program because it also allows us to be able to engage these kids while they're there. And we have aims to partner with the Judy Center to provide hands-on activities for these kids to do at home to kind of extend, um, educational resources that our county has to offer. And then we also have Meredith's that comes out twice a week to do screenings for our clients. We have a large diverse population, um, and we include Ukrainian refugees and refugees from Afghanistan, um, a lot of immigrants from South America and Mexico, so we help get them connected with social services through Meredith's and other nonprofits. And then finally, we have our Margie's Christmas Room, so we distribute, um, this past year, eight thousand Christmas gifts roughly to our Washington County families and clients. Um, and that's just kind of a nice extra thing that we're able to help our families with and support them. Next slide. So we are, we have a very robust volunteer team, I'm currently the only employee at Children in Need. Um, we have a core group of about thirty volunteers and a very dedicated board of directors who help oversee all of our operations and, um, fundraising efforts. And this past month, they dedicated over a thousand hours of volunteer support. So we invite groups of, um, different agencies to come in and volunteer and to process donations because as you can see with the next little square, we have eleven donation bins throughout the county where we accept, um, clothing and gently-used items for our clients. Um, and if we didn't receive those donations, we would be spending just over thirty thousand dollars a month just on clothing to support our families. So, there's definitely lots of ways to get involved. Um, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I'm trying to be cognizant of time for you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You guys have any questions?
I don't have any questions, just I know how important your work is, you know, the organization's work to the community. So, um, thank you for all that, you do all that the board does and that's a lot of volunteer hours, so, uh, and it takes a lot to be able to help this incredible need for our community, so thank you very much.
And we're fortunate to the city of Hagerstown too, um, we're headed into our twenty-fifth year of operation and the city of Hagerstown has supported us through different grant programs, so we're grateful for that as well.
Proud to be a supporter.
Yeah, and I, I follow your personal page-
Yes.
-as well as Children in Need's Facebook page, so I like the fact that you're asking for donations on a regular basis, so, you know, I'll continue to share, I recommend to public to continue to share because it does take a village to, to push this through and I'm thankful for your organization.
Yeah, social media pushes, uh, definitely recognized.
And we're big believers of collective impact, uh, Children in Need, so we appreciate it.
What's the best way to get in touch with you, like as far as volunteering and donations?
They can email me, um, brittany@childreninneedwc.org, but I'll go into the comments section after I'm done with this presentation and throw my email out.
You're a social media guru.
Savvy, very savvy.
You know what to do.
Not gonna get anything past term, social media.
No, not at all, no.
We would love to extend, um, an op- uh, opportunity to tour the center too, if you'd like for the mayor and city council, we would love to do that, so. People can get in touch with my people.
Have people call my people? Brittany, thank you.
Of the different ways in which you receive donations, which have you found over the long term to be the most effective?
Yeah.
Is it like between donation bins, people just giving money, people dropping it off at your place? I'm just curious, like, what's been the most effective way where you've been able to like get the stuff or get the resources and use it?
So certainly our donation bins, we, um, we have a nice partnership with Sand Mart. Uh, they have two donation bins on site, they're at their, uh, center and we receive a lot of donations particularly in that side of the county through those donation bins. But the, uh, financial contributions also allow us to purchase, um, brand-new underwear and socks, um, because we provide those every single month to our clients, so that helps us purchase those as well as our toiletries, so it's definitely, uh, both sides.
And are there specific things within those groupings that you mentioned that you're always out of, that there's never enough of?
We can always use boys pants.
Boys pants, yeah.
Yeah, my girls, like, the stuff went down the line, my boys stuff you just throw in the trash after a week, right? So, yeah, that's why I was curious.
Yeah, we, we never put out, um, or we try never to put out clothing that has holes in them and boys tend to be a little bit rough around the knees. Um, and now we're seeing, actually, it's quite comical in the- Um, and now we're seeing, actually, it's quite comical in the, in the stores that pants have, boys' pants have reinforced knees to help kind of support that. But yeah, we're always in need of those. Our extended service requests through the schools are always requesting, uh, pants, like I mentioned. So, um, and lice kits.
If a parent comes and they get for their kids, do they get to, if they have a need to, do they get to, do you have adult clothes there and, okay?
Yep, we, um, our clients are allowed or permit or rather, uh, courtesy items. So, they can get three items each month themselves. And then, uh, during the winter season, we also provide the jackets for them. And then, um, if it's something that we don't have, we connect them with different agencies to try to get those items.
So, it's not just kids' clothes. It's also, it can take some adults.
Yeah, so, um, and we also, uh, help support, uh, kids who are entering college if they're still living at home. So, if they're attending USMH or Hagerstown Community College, they can still get items through us as well.
And you have paintings, games?
Yes, yes.
Not just clothes?
No, we, um, we, we are very fortunate to receive donations of, um, car seats, uh, cribs, strollers, toys. So, it's kind of a very roundabout approach for our family support that we have.
That's great. You guys have any more questions?
Thank you so much.
Brittany, thank you for adding your, Brittany, thank you for adding your personal part, um, into, into this work and into this. As a foster kid myself.
I know.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership.
Even though you like it so much.
It's amazing.
Thank you.
Next, we have proposed zoning revisions to prep for pending cannabis reform bill. That sounds like a poem. Kathleen, my, Kathy Maher, Director of Planning and Code Administration, and Joanna Wu, Planner. Good afternoon. Who's zoning?
Yeah, we're in the midst of, with the Planning Commission, of the twenty-twenty-three Land Management Code amendments review process. They just had their public hearing. And we wanted to give you a briefing because we're trying to, to keep this moving along so that the amendments can be in effect by June thirtieth because one of the four items has to do with the pending cannabis bill out in the state legislature. So, in the packet that we gave you, we have the memo that Joanna prepared about the full set of amendments. And so, if you have questions about the other three, she can help you with that. And I'm here to give you a little more information about the cannabis amendments because I was the one that did the research on that and, um, and read the eighty-eight-page bill to try to figure out what the state is passing down to us. So, anyway, to just give you a brief, on July one, the cannabis reform bill is supposed to go into effect at the state. And there, there's a, a lot in there. And I gave a summary, a longer summary in the memo, but I want to give you some of the high points that I think that are most likely to affect us in this presentation. Uh, there's gonna be a process for conversion of existing licenses for medical cannabis to switch to adult use or to add adult use to their operations. And, um, we have, currently, we have one dispensary in the city and it is planning to seek a conversion license. We have two growers and one processor. We have not heard if they plan to, to seek a conversion license. The local governments cannot prevent the conversion of licenses for existing establishments per this bill. Um, they're also planning to license onsite consumption establishments, or what some have been calling marijuana cafes. Uh, these uses cannot be combined with tech- tobacco like in a hookah lounge or with alcohol like in bars. Local governments can prohibit this use or restrict the use from other onsite consumption establishments if they so desire. Zoning, the bill says zoning cannot unduly burden license holders with the exception of the onsite consumption facilities. Under the prior legislation, the number of available licenses and the geographic distribution of licenses was very tight. We interpreted medical cannabis dispensaries as pharmacies and therefore as retail. So, they're permitted wherever retail is permitted in the city. Many zoning districts allow retail. Our only dispensary in the city is located in the CR, Commercial, Commercial, uh, Commercial, 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 Regional, Commercial. That's a new zoning term. Commercial Regional Zone on Basil Boulevard. Um, we allow indoor plant growing and processing facilities in the CCMU, which is downtown, the Professional Office Mixed-Use Zone, and then the three industrial zones, IMU, IR, and IG. We have two growers in the IG zone and one processor in the IR zone. It is unclear in the pending bill how many licenses might be assigned to our community for the various types of establishments planned for licensing. However, we do know the state plans to prioritize a more diverse pool of license holders and to prioritize geographic areas disproportionately impacted by the drug trade. It's not clear how they plan to implement these social equity goals of the, of the, uh, bill. Um, the proposed amendments that we have before us are, is to make it clear what we currently allow. Medical cannabis dispensaries are not listed in the code because they are interpreted as a pharmacy and permitted where retail is allowed, as I just said. The code is proposed to revise the code to add cannabis dispensaries and to allow them in the four zoning districts where tobacco establishments are allowed, the CG, the CR, and the two PUD zones. Including the five-hundred-foot separation requirement, which is already in the code for the tobacco uses. So, it would also be, uh, include the cannabis dispensaries. Our one existing dispensary would not be affected by this change. Limit existing non-cannabis uses to what they were intended for. The hookah lounges and vape lounges were intended for tobacco and so the definition is to be revised to make it clear that they are only for tobacco. With this change, it is made clearer that onsite consumption facilities for cannabis are not allowed in the city. There are no current hookah or vape lounges in the city. The third item would be to remove the downtown as a permitted location for growing and processing or processing of cannabis. The plan is to revise the code to no longer allow indoor plant processing and cultivating facilities in the CCMU Downtown Zoning District because this is a mixed-use zone that allows housing. So, um, the growing and processing of the cannabis does create an odor despite what they told us several years ago. And so, we figured maybe we should not allow it anymore in the CCMU, which we don't have any now because under the original bill, all of these facilities were quite large. So, they were looking in the industrial zones. The new bill is proposing to allow smaller growers and so they might start looking at the downtown. So, we felt, we better say we, that's not where we're interested in seeing them. So, the three existing growers, processors, or so, in industrial zones would not be affected by this change. What we're suggesting is that after July one, when we know more about the state's licensing distribution plans and what investors want to bring to the city, we can consider whether to allow for onsite consumption establishments or to broaden the areas where the dispensaries, growers, and processors are allowed if the Planning Commission and the mayor and council so desire. The next steps in the process with these text amendments would be the Planning Commission making a recommendation on April twelfth and the mayor and council holding a hearing on April twenty-fifth. We, we sent out the information about the proposed changes to our existing cannabis enterprises in the city and did not hear back from them. We did not have any comments at the public hearing or in the ten-day review period affecting this proposed change. We did get one comment, uh, today or yesterday affecting one of the other three items. And it was actually from the person who requested we make the change to the code for the conversion district, saying that he was still in support of the idea. So, we have that in the record. And so, that's what we're proposing to prepare for the pending state cannabis, um, legislation. We just wanted to give you a head up, heads up because we knew there was some interest on the council about this.
Well, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if the word's interest, but I mean, the, the-
Interest, concern.
The hypocrisy of this is just nauseating. It just is. I mean, the government is like, uh, catching up what's been, you know, occurring, you know, you know, in, in, in every part of the country, you know, since its conception, uh, and saying, you know, now we're gonna be in charge of it. Um, and, and by the way, you know, we want you to, 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 uh, violate your oath of office to do it. That's what we're doing, right? All of us here are required to uphold the Constitution of the U.S. That's what we took an oath to do. And if we adopt this, uh, under the state's demand that we do, the first time it was this joke, uh, suggesting that it was for medical reasons. And I said then, it has nothing to do with medical reasons, right? Zero. Uh, and, and it just, it was just a way to buy time to see what other states were doing, right? To see if they were gonna, like, be okay, uh, uh, to legalize it, which they should have just done in the first place. Like, I don't understand, you know, why, why wait? Uh, you know, it, it's, it's just crazy to me that they're like, hey, you have to violate your oath of office. You have to break your oath to uphold the U.S. Constitution, right? And you have to adopt these things. And by the way, now, right, the first time was you have to just do that. Now, what they're saying is we're going to assert your charter authority. As a chartered government, right, we are a chartered form of government. We are provided within that charter to make the rules that we deem appropriate for the course of this jurisdiction. That's the entire purpose of that charter. Uh, and the state's saying, no, we're not gonna recognize your charter, even though we allowed you to create it. We're not gonna recognize it and we're gonna remove your charter authority for zoning. And we're gonna tell you that it has to occur, uh, in this manner and for these purposes. It just, it, it's, it's crazy, the, the genius of, of the idiots behind this that are writing this stuff, uh, uh, simply because they don't have the fortitude, you know what I mean, to just make the switch. It's almost like, you know, when, when, when we, you know, the age of prohibition, as long as the prohibitors still got rich off that prohibition. And that's exactly what's happening here all over again with weed. That's a fact.
Except it's in the public.
I did, because it is. It's weed. That's what we're doing. We're, we're, we're legalizing the sale of weed so the government can make money, right? Where private enterprise, uh, has done it over decades of prohibition of it, uh, by saying it's okay, uh, to do. And, and lawmakers, you just have to, have to go along with what we want you to do. And this whole notion of pharmaceutical, let's be honest, right? If it's pharmaceutical and it's treated for medical reasons, the way it was described to us when we were at MML that year is that we don't get taxes on it. Well, there's no better way to make money on it. But by legalizing it, taking the pretense of medical off of it and taxing it like we do beer and, and whiskey and cigarettes and all those other things and gambling. So, I just, it's just frustrating to sit here and, and read it and hear it and go, yeah, you know? We understand what you're doing. It's for the good of us. That's cool.
Yeah, we, we tell people when we, when they get a zoning certificate for the cannabis enterprises that there's always a disclaimer about if the federal government decides to go after the states for allowing marijuana, then this zoning approval will no longer be in effect.
Well, that, you know, the, the, the taxes that have been collected, the buildings that have been constructed, all of that. You know, no one's ever gonna have the fortitude because somebody's gonna pay somebody to make sure that that doesn't occur once the legalized recreational sale of weed gets long, large enough to be able to afford to buy the politicians to ensure that it doesn't go away. That's a reality.
And then to compound that on the internal side of things, it's really gonna put pressure when it comes to CDL licensing. In that CDL licensing is a federal licensing that, of which marijuana is not considered a legal substance federally. So, if it's legal in Maryland and somebody wants a job that requires a CDL, do they, do you test them? Does that included in your testing to get your license?
Or are you gonna, are you gonna be protected by that medical card any longer?
Protected by the, yeah. Which there won't be medical, there won't be medical cards anymore. So, we, we actually talked about that today. And it's, it's, it's gonna be a little messy. It's gonna be a lot messy, yeah.
Well, I said then, just, just legalize it all and get it everywhere.
Yeah, and, and that's, I, I think that's where I'm at. Why, why hasn't that been done?
Because government needs to buy time in order to position themselves correctly and make sure they're the moneymakers, uh, and the decision-makers on how it occurs. That one presentation, that guy, they tried to sell me on, well, you know, we're doing this because, you know, we're like, we're the professionals of how to grow this in the appropriate way to make sure it's good, you know, of, of, of sound and safe quality for those medical reasons. Give me a break. You know what I mean? I got people that, that grown it for, for decades recreationally, on their own privately, that I'm sure are just as qualified, you know what I mean, to produce the same exact substance. It's just, it's a joke.
Well, the bill does spell out that there's a certain amount that people can grow in their own home.
Which I think's great.
And it does, it does take a little while to prepare something like this. So, that could be why there was the time.
I'm just saying you can brew beer in your house, you know what I mean, like?
Thank you, David.
I mean, it's, it's no different than that now.
It is. It's no different.
But we wanted to prepare ourselves for it. So, that's why we're proposing this strategy.
Thank you. Thank you for putting this together.
Sure. And if you have any other questions, Joanna would be more than happy to let you know about the other three.
Joanna's the planting weed expert.
Planting weed expert.
It's a very small package this year. Did you want to hear anything about the other three? Or, or be surprised at the hearing? You can do that.
We love surprises.
Okay.
Surprises.
Yeah, I will want to hear at some point about the dog indoor.
Yeah, I s- I assume that there's someone who's come to the city about that?
Yes.
Okay. From reading through that.
They, uh, they were talking with our economic development staff, the desire to be able to open up dog daycare downtown.
It's just very odd to me to read that in the one specific area that the dog daycare will be confined to indoors only.
Right.
I just, that, that doesn't make sense to me.
Whatever we were gonna allow it, we were trying to make it so it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have a- but it wouldn't have a negative impact on nearby residents. In the downtown, you could be living above commercial areas. You could be living right beside. And if someone has got dogs barking twelve hours a day in the backyard, that could, yeah, could drive you to drink for sure.
I, well, I just, it's just odd to me that we would say, yeah, it's okay to have it here, you know? Uh, but you gotta keep all seventy dogs inside.
Seventy?
Whatever. Well, it's one dog per hundred square feet. Let's take a building in the CCMU. I mean, okay. I, I agree. I just think it's weird.
Yeah, it seemed like it had to be a very specific request.
You're in my neighborhood.
That's what I'm saying. They just go, they, I mean.
That part was weird. You have, you have a dog daycare, it's just gotta be inside.
Dog grooming is one thing, but dog daycare is like another. You take the dog in and get groomed and you leave, right?
Yeah, this is something, they're, they're not lonely at home while you're at work.
This is just like while you're at work so your dogs can be socialized.
Yeah, if you have anxious dogs that are gonna tear your house apart, you wanna bring them somewhere.
Or they can tell someone else's house apart.
We wanted to draw a clear distinction between daycare and kennels.
And I, I think that's good. I, I think, you know, if you had a hundred dogs in, in the backyard next door to your house, you would probably be like, mm, I don't know. You know, I wouldn't personally wanna kennel next door to my house. So, I, I think it's good to draw that distinction.
A hundred dogs playing together are not quiet.
No.
Yeah, I just, I can't, I can't envision a level of soundproofing, which is mentioned in here, that you'd have to go through.
The people who want to open these enterprises are used to this kind of stuff. It's common in other towns that allow it that they have those expectations. So, it wouldn't be a surprise to anybody wanting to do dog daycare. And also the conversion district. That was requested by one of the owners of one of our local conversion districts.
So, it would modify, it would, uh, loosen the restrictions currently so they can be able to build a small addition in the front rather than the back. Because you're placing the back. There is, yeah, there's no space.
And the fourth one was to clean up an inconsistency in the code where simplified plots are supposed to be staff-approved and yet it says, could go to the Planning Commission if they want it to come to the Planning Commission. And if the Planning Commission Chair needs to sign off on it, well, that, that's, that's not staff-approved then. And simplified plots, the way we handle it in Hagerstown are not for development purposes. It's just you breaking up pieces to sell. And so, really, it's not a Planning Commission matter. It's more of a legal matter. So, this is making it clearly, this is just a staff matter, not something that needs to go to the Planning Commission. They have enough on their agendas. So, that's it.
You gotta work on your surprise technique.
It didn't seem like you just wanted to be completely surprised.
I mean, I know.
We'll do a surprise next time.
Thank you.
We could do it in a different order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, my goodness. This is our favorite, all right.
Our favorite budget review, yay.
We have our Scott, our C. Administrator, Michelle, Chief Financial Officer.
So, I'll go ahead. I'll go ahead. So, first I want to thank the management team, the staff, to, uh, their work together to get the FY twenty-four budget together. Uh especially want to thank uh the great job as always that the finance department did led by CFO Michelle Hepburn and accounting manager Brooke Garber. Accounting and finance staff began this process in November of twenty twenty-two with departmental discussion uh of the first six months of F Y twenty-three and forecasts on revenue and expenses for the remainder of this fiscal year. Staff then met after the start of twenty twenty-three to discuss plans and budgetary requirements for F Y twenty-four, including one-time capital expenditures and regular operating needs. Staff also ensured that all budget recommendations for revenue and expenses aligned appropriately with the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four strategic plan of this mayor and council. And to that end, you have the resulting document in front of you. I'm going to go over this a little bit, a more detailed for, for Matt's benefit um about how this process goes because you're just jumping right in the middle of the lava pool here, so. To begin, we are pleased once again to submit a budget to the Marion City Council that includes no tax rate increase from the predominant one dollar per hundred dollars of assessed value. This budget does eliminate the apartment tier tax rate of a dollar three per a hundred dollars of assessed value for buildings of four or more units. A majority of taxpayers in the city of Hagerstown will however see a tax bill increase if they receive notice of a property assessment increase in the assessed value of the land and or improvement, which the improvement would primarily be their, their house. This is due to the fact that we are in year one of the triennial reassessment period performed by the State Department of Assessment and Taxation. Again, when, when your house is assessed, your property is assessed, the State Department of Assessment and Taxation does it, the city does not do it, we just set the rate. Assessments have shown to have an expected growth, growth of five point two five percent, which represents an increase potentially of one point five six million over our current F Y twenty-three revenue. However, given the amount of contracted salary requirements, benefit increases, large infrastructure needs and debt service requirements, we have kept the tax rate level with the last several years. The additional revenue is necessary to offset the same rises in expenses private and personal entities have experienced over the last year, as well as keeping the city competitive and retaining and recruiting staff into local government. We did want to provide relief to those who are renting living space, space in larger apartment structures by eliminating the three cent higher tax tier in the hopes that rents could be adjusted to acknowledge this reduction in tax liability. We're also in the second of three years of the American Rescue Plan Funding, A R P A, which we continue to allocate to projects that meet the requirements set forth by the federal government in twenty twenty-one. All twenty point four million dollars of funding must be spent or appropriated by December of twenty twenty-four. And as of June of twenty twenty-two, funding utilized totaled four point three million dollars. F Y twenty-three project expenditures are three point nine million, with F Y twenty-four projected expenditures being over ten million. The council has advised very productive use of these funds that meet, meet both a community and infrastructure need. Funding was provided through A R P A for a grants coordinator and a community liaison position, police body warm camera maintenance, which is now a requirement in the state of Maryland, a fleet of high-tech drones for our public safety divisions, trash totes for our urban core residents of Hagerstown, as well as various general fund wastewater and stormwater fund capital projects that otherwise would have taken years to accomplish if finished at all. We have approximately four million dollars left unallocated in A R P A funding and continue to meet to identify areas to present to this body on usage. You can expect to see a more aggressive use of this balance to aid in the elimination of blight within the city due to advances in legislation giving local municipalities more flexibility and acquiring and transferring blight to productive use over the next year. As stated earlier, staff made a deliberate effort to align this budget to the stated goals and objectives of the city council's strategic plan. We're very proud to acknowledge that halfway into this administration's tenure, we are at ninety-five percent of either accomplished or in progress of accomplishing the goals as stated. We are confident that this budget will get us to a hundred percent and beyond as our city is transforming before our eyes and will identify those projects and needs that were only vaguely conceptual two and a half years ago, but are now quickly approaching reality. This budget takes into consideration an expanded community engagement and events program, expanding economic development incentives and opportunities, as well as capital projects, including Wheaton Park Phase Two, the Antietam Street parking deck, and of course, the Hagerstown Fieldhouse that will provide economic and tourism benefits to our community such as not seen in many years. This does not mean that the city does not face significant challenges in the years ahead. We must be aware that although in the first year of a very favorable assessment period related to property values, we can't, we cannot expect the same to be true in twenty twenty-six. We also are living in a volatile financial environment that any day can present challenges to this budget or to the financial forecast located within the document. We remain conservative, we're prudent in, in ensuring that we are able to meet challenges similar to those that were faced during the initial months of the COVID nineteen pandemic. As mentioned earlier, we are also in the most competitive job market seen in decades. We are faced not only with being competitive financially with other industries in the four state area, but also in what benefits we provide those that have come out of the pandemic used to working from home or working outside the office. Local government does not lend itself to being a predominantly work-from-home type of environment as we are the frontline for citizens to address their needs within our community. It is a huge challenge we face in providing the work-life balance that many require since the onset of COVID nineteen in twenty twenty, and we will continue to work on this throughout this fiscal year. As to our six funding areas, the memo addresses the highlights in the budget. Our utilities, electric, water, wastewater and stormwater remain in a strong financial position with the already approved rain increases in water and wastewater, as well as the funding model for wastewater approved in F Y twenty-two. Again, the capital projects and expenses and availability of materials to facilitate construction or repairs has risen exponentially over the past fiscal year. This budget reflects those additional costs and timelines. We have budgeted for no increase in parking rates for F Y twenty-four, even with the addition of the third parking deck set for completion in twenty twenty-four. I'll turn the discussion over to Michelle and Brooke, who can provide some more context and details and have them provide you the timeline of events leading up to the ultimate approval of the budget.
Thank you. So I think just overall, our, our book, we've got hardbound copies again that have been distributed. The electronic version is up and available online, which is hard to navigate because it's almost five hundred pages probably. But again, we kept the book in the same layout and the same format that it has been in for years. Just to kind of quickly highlight that for this group, alright? So first up, we have a preface and we have a little bit on overall demographics and a table of contents. Then we have the overview section. And really, this overview section starts with a nice memo from city administrator, but really the first fifty pages, and it's grown because, you know, sometimes administrator, nice one, or, you know, writes four pages of memos in a fifty-page document, but no. Honestly, the first fifty pages are a highlight of pretty much the entire citywide big impact, big dollars, big items, big, big overall things. Once you get past the overview, we have um strategic goals and priorities, we have goals specifically from departments, we have some other information. But then really, section two, we start with the general fund because it is the largest governmental fund in the city of Hagerstown. And it is predominantly like sixty-five to sixty-seven percent funded by taxpayer dollars. So it has its own section and what we do is we start with some nice revenue charts and then we get into individual departmental levels. So if anybody is looking for information on a specific, specific division or department that falls under the general fund, you're going to find it in section two. Everything here is laid out to the dollar, it's not rounded to the thousands. Next, we have section three, which is our enterprise fund section. And so that section will encompass all of our funds that are business-type or more driven that are to, all of their expenses are to be covered with charges for services. So electric, water, wastewater, stormwater, golf and property management. And again, it's going to have departmental information for those within those divisions. So if you're looking to see that level of detail, you're really looking at section two and three. See, one, the general fund, and then enterprise funds. Next, we kind of continue with that when we get to special revenue funds, which is section four. Section four, much like the general fund, is governmental funds. The largest two that fall in that category in that section are going to be our C D B G, which is Community Development Block Grant Program Fund, which again primarily is funded with federal HUD dollars and our um city's Economic Redevelopment Fund. There are other funds within here, and again, if you're looking to see more specific details on those, that again is a section to, to look. Last, one of the individual sections would really be section five, when we talk about service and trust funds. And those are our workers' comp, our health insurance, dental insurance, and um Bloom Carlyle. The three big are workers' comp, health and dental. Again, once you get past sections two through five, so the major funds of the city of Hagerstown, this is where you're going to see the individual departmental information or more dollar-based detail. Then we go to financial projection section, section six. We start all over, but instead we do it, instead of to the dollar, we round everything off to the thousands. And instead of just looking at current year, prior year budget, we also go four years out, which is sometimes very tricky to estimate. But we do it for the, our major funds. So again, general fund, electric, water, wastewater, golf, parking, stormwater and health insurance fund. We will probably spend time in, in the overview section with those charts and more this time, I think, from a review perspective in the financial projection sections instead of in the individual details. But if you have questions, we're more than happy to go to those charts and include them for our weekly updates. It's just that a lot of the things that we are doing are big projects and yes, we're looking to do them in fiscal, start them in fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four, but really the impact you're going to see is starting fiscal year twenty-five. So that's where we're going to concentrate more this year in the financial projection section than in the past. Next up, we have the largest section in, within our book, and it is our Capital Improvement Program. It's a little bit different in that it's, again, it's not a fund, it's our entire capital improvement program. So we have everything that is our general fund, projects as well as electric, water, wastewater, stormwater, golf, property management. And then last but not least, um section eight is probably one of the smallest and it is our user fee schedule followed by the final section, which is just like glossary and has some of our um fiscal policies. But just kind of a lay of the land, how, where things are. We have made available, we've made extra copies of the first fifty pages. We did include it with this initial memo so that it was available to the public again because that fifty pages is much easier to navigate than five hundred plus and because it has higher level detail. So if you're looking to see what is really happening, instead of trying to navigate and click through all these pages, fifty pages isn't as bad as five hundred plus. We've also made extra spare copies, so if there's anybody here at meetings and they wish to see the budget as such, we have them available and everyone at table, we'll keep them here like we have in prior years through um the middle of May when we actually adopted. I think we're going to turn it over to Brooke, I'm just going to end it with, Scott pretty much touched upon our A R P A funding, just big picture. We did include some charts again this year in our budget document, but we are planning to come on either April the eleventh or eighteenth. In addition to, to doing a budget presentation, we are going to provide a quarterly update on A R P A so that we can look at all the things, what we specifically have allocated, how much is spent, how much is remaining, okay?
So tonight, we're just going to kind of go over general, um, high-level information for all of the major funds. And then we'll be back over the next few weeks to get into more detail, general funds, C I P, those types of things. So starting with the general fund, um, some key information. The budget is balanced with a two thousand one hundred dollar surplus. As Scott mentioned earlier, uh, the apartment category of the real estate tax was eliminated, which decreases revenue by about eighty-five thousand dollars. The real estate tax rate, the one point zero zero two, remains the same. That equals out to about three hundred and eight thousand dollars in revenue for each penny on the tax rate.
So again, for each penny that we receive, that's about three hundred and eight thousand dollars in revenue. And that's one of the numbers that I think everybody likes to hear often, except for council member Ochscher, he likes it broken down a little differently, but we just want to do, remind. And that is a reflection of, for the first time in a long time, being able to present positive news in that we're finally seeing growth after many years of the first year, right, being a decrease.
Um, there was no change in corporate personal property tax rates. Uh, assessed value growth, we have included um in the budget at seven percent, which is a little bit higher than S stat, which was five point two percent. And that's just due to possible annexations, new developments, things like that.
And when S stat, when the State Department of Assessment and Taxation sent the constant yield notice and there was a five point two percent increase, again, we were extremely happy because it's the first one in the last four, you know, we had a major, the eleven percent, over eleven percent decrease. But even, even when we rebounded, all of our following first-year triennial reassessments were constantly decreased. So this is the first one in, in like a decade. When we met with them and actually um received reports in December, the overall estimated growth is much higher than that. But S stat is um including what they estimate will happen in the way of appeals and abatements. And given our historical trends, yes, that's absolutely going to happen, but realistically, with their reports and the growth and the warehouse developments and everything that we have seen, we feel that we're comfortable with this.
Downstairs, we never came close to the, to the abatement appeal number, so.
And we do recognize that the cap is in place, right? There is a, there is a cap, just five.
Five percent.
When the residential stuff.
Um, highway user revenue, a hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred is included to cover debt service and one point nine million for capital projects. Uh, there are no transfers from the health insurance fund this year. Uh, utilization of general fund fund balance reserves is at one point nine million. And that's from a previously approved budget for projects that were not yet completed. Uh, reallocation to a new few capital projects and added some additional reserves and utilization while maintaining the fund balance and retained earning policy.
And that one point nine million did not include um what we just approved a week ago and that was utilizing fund balance reserves of five hundred and eighty thousand towards the one point two million dollars for the acquisition of land at fifty to fifty-eight Antietam Street. And actually that sale and went, already occurred and we went to closing yesterday, so that's good news.
Total transfers from the general fund to economic redevelopment are at one point one million and that include, includes nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand for investors' income. Changes in full-time staffing compared to F Y twenty-three. Six vacant sworn positions in police were unfunded. Uh, there was a conversion of one part-time to full-time in economic development. A conversion of part-time to full-time position in police and one new full-time community liaison position in police, that's fully covered by A R P A right now. Since the budget, budget presentation, police added two additional full-time positions and eliminated three part-time positions, which are not reflected in the staffing schedule in the budget. Salary and benefit costs in the general fund, total thirty-six million and comprised sixty-two point one percent of general fund expenditures. Bond issue of nineteen point three million is included and that's if no additional funding uh from others is received and that's for the Hagerstown Fieldhouse.
And we'll definitely take a future meeting to talk about an update of where we are and, and funding for the Hagerstown Fieldhouse, if not next week, the following week, because that's, it's a big ticket item. And nineteen point three million in our, in our budget projections, we included about a one point five million annual debt service for twenty years. So that's significant, we, we will be revisiting that topic. And then just overall, um, because of that, and not, not solely because of that, but that is one of the very um large contributing factors. We're estimating in fiscal year twenty-five that we'll have a, a deficit of about five point three million if there's no other changes and if we need to continue to fund capital. if there's no other changes, and if we need to continue to fund capital infrastructures from transfers from general.
Moving on to the economic redevelopment fund, some highlights there. Nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand is included for the Invest Hagerstown program. Thirty-five thousand is included for individual or customized incentives, including spring sprouts. A hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred is including, is included for PEP incentives.
And the PEP incentives, that hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred aren't just the assistance with the rental payments, but it also includes the five-year tax grant back.
The electric fund, there's currently a contract in place through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, that sets both the revenue and the majority of all expenses. It's currently at seventy-six point two percent. No change in full-time staffing positions. Capital projects, total two point five million for FY twenty-four. And overall, there's a one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar surplus. Ending cash balance projections decrease from one point three million in FY twenty-four to negative six point one million in FY twenty-seven and negative eight point one million in FY twenty-eight.
And again, we'll look at the financial projections in the out-years, but basically in the electric fund, of course, we haven't increased our rates in twenty years.
Twenty-five years.
Okay. And we have, not that we have a large, because the electric fund in our IBEW contract is our smallest union group, but we have, you know, obviously, over those last twenty to twenty-five years, increased salaries, which have increased benefits. And knowing that some of the other things that are coming, the two point five million that they have estimated in the electric fund for fiscal year twenty-four for capital infrastructure improvements is a large number compared to what they typically do. And if, if all of that comes to pass, you know, might be time to be having a conversation. Is it time to have a conversation after twenty-five years with the PSC one rates? I don't, I don't know very many other electric providers who haven't seen a rate increase. I personally have, quite often, the past twenty years, but more to come on that.
Okay, water fund, there's a cost rate model approved and effective through FY twenty-four with three percent annual increases. No change in full-time staffing positions. Capital projects, total eight million, and there's a two point eight million dollar deficit for FY twenty-four. Ending total cash balance projections decrease from eleven million in FY twenty-four to negative six point eight million in FY twenty-eight.
And there, when we get to looking at the water fund and we look at the out-year projections, the water fund, you know, that's a total cash balance. There are some restricted cash balances that we have for the water fund that we have to maintain. So again, it's not necessarily our own fund, funds that we're restricting in cash, and not because of our own policy, but there's others. So we'll talk about those. Again, in looking at the water fund, we've, on several occasions, Nancy has, the director of utilities, has been here recently and discussed many large projects and looking at getting MDE loan funds. So you're starting to see the impact of that as we look at the financial projections, start, and start talking about the decline in cash balances, if that were to occur. And why rate increases are going to be definitely a conversation for the next cost rate model.
Wastewater fund, same thing, cost rate model approved and effective through FY twenty-four with three percent annual increases. No change in full-time staffing positions. Capital projects, total nine point seven million for FY twenty-four. And in FY twenty-four, there is a four point two million surplus. Total cash balance projections decrease from six point four million in FY twenty-four to negative three point seven million in FY twenty-eight.
Similar to what we're seeing on the water side, again, large infrastructure projects, some that's going to be funded with ARPA, but some that are going to be loans. And then, just as we start walking through, through these, again, Nancy and her staff have already started the process, because the rates are only good through twenty twenty-four, they've already started the process with a consultant on what the rate model needs to look like in trying to fine-tune even further than what we did in the budget, exactly what those projects are going to be in time, as of those projects.
Parking fund, no new rate increases for FY twenty-four.
Yet, but we will be having a conversation closer to the completion of the construction of a new parking deck. Say the caveat on that.
No change in full-time staffing levels, but one new part-time position was added. The third parking deck construction begins in FY twenty-three with revenue and operating expenses included for a full year beginning in FY twenty-five. Total capital projects included for FY twenty-four equal ten point three million. This assumes a bond issue will happen in FY twenty-three for ten million, but since the budget preparation, the bond need has increased to ten point six million. Includes a five hundred and five thousand dollar deficit for FY twenty-four. And the ending cash balance projections decrease from two point four, negative two point four million for FY twenty-four to negative three million in FY twenty-seven to negative three point six million in FY twenty-eight.
And that, and that was something we had discussed during previous budget cycles, when we started looking at, at the point that we add the new parking deck. It's a large debt service to take on, and it's going to take a couple of years, it's going to probably take ten years. Hopefully, it's less than that, but it could take up to ten years to start to see a positive cash flow. And not because there is a lot of other debt currently within the parking fund, there's definitely not. And, you know, prior to this week's purchase of the new land acquisition, their total cash balance was only like one point six million, so just bought land for one point two. It kind of puts it into perspective. So again, this isn't, this isn't alarming, this isn't anything out of the ordinary, and it's not that we aren't going to get where we need to be, it's still a good overall decision, and you'll see that in the financial projections.
And lastly, stormwater fund, a cost rate model is in place for thirty-six dollars per one thousand dollar square feet of impervious surface for calendar year twenty twenty-three. And then moving forward, any new rate changes will need to be calculated by a consultant.
And when we do that, we've talked, and it would be staff recommendation, and again, we'll get into that at later dates, but it's staff recommendation, it's one of the only things that we change rates in January, follows a calendar cycle. Everything else is fiscal. So the requests that I have made, especially, you know, from a building and customer service perspective, and also just, again, from our customers and a budgeting perspective, is let's go ahead and try to change that to a fiscal year. And if any way possible, go ahead and absorb a no rate increase between that January and that July, that additional six months. But again, just trying to get to the point where we can put that into fiscal, fiscal year conversion, right?
Full-time staffing positions decrease slightly from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four, and that's from public works and engineering. Capital projects equal two point six million, and there's a two point seven million dollar surplus for FY twenty-four.
And so for the most part, April eleventh through May sixteenth, we'll be back, we'll be a little bit more in detail, we'll be more focused. And so next week, not to give, you know, it all away, but we'll definitely start with the general fund. In the past, we kind of spent two or three weeks on the general fund. I'm hoping that this year we can focus, review the general fund, but within a week, move on so that we can talk about the infrastructure projects and the financial projections and some of the other things that we don't always get to focus as much on, unless there's questions or unless we need to go slower. And then May ninth is when we've scheduled for our public hearing and the introduction of ordinances for both the tax rate as well as the budget. And then May sixteenth would be the adoption of the ordinances for the budget and the tax rate. Any questions?
I have one question. So on page twenty-one of this document, it indicates under the number five, FY twenty-four general fund revenues and expenditures, it says that, and you, you noted it earlier, general fund is total, the largest revenue source in the general fund is a total property tax revenue at thirty-seven point six million or sixty-four point nine percent of all current revenue, right?
Right.
So when I look at that number, the thirty-seven point six million, and I reference the property tax revenue, is that referencing the, the, basically the one-dollar assessment on property taxes? Or does that include, does that include any other tax rates?
So that property tax revenue of thirty-seven point six million includes it all. It's the real estate, which is the one point zero zero two, and it includes the corporate personal property, which is two point five oh five. It also includes pilots, so we have a handful of those, as well as the pilot revenue that we charge to electric water.
So if you had to take a number off of that, just round figures, off of that thirty-seven and a half million, you would take what?
To get to what number?
Four or five million bucks off of that?
To get.
To get straight to property tax?
Real estate, not.
Real estate only, land and improvements?
Right, you would take. I mean, it's some fraction of it.
It is. So corporate personal property taxes is... It's over three million? About four point two million, and then pilots are about two point eight.
Right, so I'm at thirty million bucks, right?
Yes. Sorry.
That's okay.
That also allows for the reduction in the enterprise zone tax credits, which is increasing because we had a couple large.
So we're just trying to get down to what the root, like penny on the dollar is, and it's basically ten dollars. Right, so if I'm in the fifteen hundred dollar class, which is on, what page? On page five.
Yes.
Right, I look at my house, and I'm assessed around that fifteen hundred dollar mark. And every penny for me is about eleven dollars, right? So just when we're talking about these things, you know, we're talking about the things that we do. When you break them out into the chart that you have on page six, you know, you apply that fifty-one percent times your eleven bucks, you know, or fifty-one percent of your fifteen hundred dollars, or seven fifty is going, right, did I do that math right, seven fifty? Yeah, that half of fifteen hundred? Yeah, that's going to public safety, so everyone, a little piece of the pie equals that, and you say, okay, you know, that means.
Fifty-one cents, yes.
Half of my pennies or half of my, you know, total amount. So that's what I try and look at, if you can say, well, you know.
Yes.
And if there's ever, if there's a push to decrease the tax rate, then you also have three hundred thousand dollars per every cent you would want to, three hundred and five?
Three hundred and eight.
Three hundred and eight.
Basically, you sit here and you'd say, okay, you know, okay, well, what do you want to take away?
Right.
You know?
Right.
Okay, do you want to take away something in parks, do you want to take away something in public safety, do you want to take something? Like, you have to apply that in terms, is it worth that X amount?
Right.
Of your money to do it, and that's where I come back to, you know.
Just what you said, eleven dollars.
Yeah, well, when we talk about like, you know, I've always said, hey, I'd love to have, you know, a demolition, you know, strategy.
Right.
You know, so three hundred thousand dollars is eleven bucks. And if you said, hey, Chris, can I have eleven dollars so I can go tear buildings down that look like junk? You know, I'd say, here's eleven dollars, you know, have at it. So just those types of things.
Yes.
But there's things that citizens want, you know what I mean, that are out there, then you have to equate it to, you know, what's that penny worth to you to have that thing that you want in your community? Or don't want.
Right.
And, and I, I, I'm not shy in saying that I am not a fan of surpluses. I'm not a fan, and she and I have a, have a fundamental difference on that, but.
I know.
I, I, I want to, I'm not a fan of deficits either, large deficits, but by the same token, you know, I want to see, I want to see the budget spent. And I want to see it spent in the way that is presented here that you all approve.
I mean, I think there's a healthy balance to like, keeping a lot of money to do nothing.
Right.
And showing no like tangible result from it, and not keeping any money, and not having the, the fiscal stability to go get money when you need it to spend it on time.
That's correct. That's correct.
And, and so, to touch upon that, the large dollar, the thirty million dollar, right? By far, the largest portion of our budget. We rely on ESTAT to provide us the reports, we rely on them to help us make the estimates. So if in July, July first, we get that tax file, and it's a million dollars more, you know, I'm already a million dollars more or surplus than what I originally anticipated. So that, that makes it hard and difficult, because at the same time, and I do, I, I understand we have these conversations all the time, but I would rather it go into fund balance at that point and come back and plan, plan how it's going to be spent, one-time things and not recurring things in the following budget process, instead of... But things have come up, and I'm glad that we have had the surpluses we've had because of the projects and because of the fieldhouse. And we have spent fund balance reserve the past several years. But again, done it cautiously, we are being very diligent, and we are maintaining our target in a very healthy percentage balance, which is going to be even more necessary when we do our bond issue, right?
Well, I think that, you know, up until a couple of years ago, we weren't getting real good report cards each year from the state, you know, in their diligence to assess the value of our, of our properties in the community. And I guess for me, you know, now that we're getting what I feel are more stable reports, you know, and, and more fair assessments, I think I'm gravitating toward, toward the being okay with, with eliminating the tiered system. But the reality was, you know, five years ago, when that was initiated, we were getting these reports, right? And twenty percent of the property base or, or housing stock in this community was assuming eighty percent of the assessment increases. And that, that has, that has, that, that dynamic has shifted, and I think, you know, become more fair, and it makes me, makes me be okay. Even though it wasn't one of those houses in that housing stock, it makes me okay that, you know, that fairness is starting to.
And that was the year that the body, the elected body said, we're going to do that three cents, right? We're going to do it across the board, so they bumped up all the other categories, but bumped apartments more. And we said, we would use all that growth back into the Invest Hagerstown program, and we would promise we would keep a portion that was for rentals, right? To help reinvest back into the community that was being an increase. The reality is, three cents on thirty million, and the only amount is eighty-five thousand. That, that's, that's all the more that the city receives on it. So from a staff perspective, in a way that the files come from the state and the things that we have to do, I'm not sure if it's really worth eighty-five thousand.
Right.
We will still, overall, so what I do is, this is, this is, this is literally how we do it. We've had assessed value growth increase, and we're three hundred and eight thousand per penny. So three hundred and eight thousand per penny times three pennies, that's how much we're giving into the Invest Hagerstown program. And we continue to do that every single year in the budget. If the assessments would come in lower, I'm not going to take that money back away. We're already committed to putting it over into economic redevelopment, and we've already committed to having that amount in funding for the Invest Hagerstown program, so.
So the thought in eliminating that tier system is that we're hopeful that rents will go down?
Hopefully.
That's the thought?
We're trying, I don't, I don't.
That's not my opinion.
I, I can't imagine that will happen, but.
My opinion, ESTAT has, has, uh, um, uh, has confirmed that those valuations are increasing in a manner to, to, to present greater fairness between the valuations of the various types of housing stock we have. And it isn't worth the four bucks it was saving us now, you know what I mean? To spend that, what is it, twenty-six dollars, you know, that we set aside for, from the average property for that invest program.
Yeah.
Originally, originally it was, you know, much more than that.
But to your point, when, when this was proposed five years ago, the big outcry was, how can, you're going, you're going to, we're going to have to raise rents a hundred, two hundred, three hundred dollars if you institute this three-cent tier. if you institute this three cent tier. So if that was the case and that's what happened,
Gotcha.
Decrease your rent. I doubt, but I'm like, I doubt it happens too.
The market controls that.
But there's, I would also, I would also argue somewhat that there still needs to be a discussion overall with S-Jet, S-Stat on general philosophy of assess, of how they assess the properties. Uh, we know for a fact that properties, now that we've got these developments of Mike Straddle City County, that county, uh, assessments are different, are assessed different than city assessments are. And I would argue that's because of double taxation. Um, so that's, that's, that's going to be a talk. When I was down in Annapolis on the tax sale thing, S-Stat was one of the, uh, test, testifiers also. And I mentioned that and, you know, it was just kind of one of those, well, it's kind of like an unwritten rule. And like, well, it, it, you know, it doesn't help a municipality if that's, if that's, you know, the unwritten rule. So I, I think there's still work to be done there.
Other questions though, before we go? Cause I know it's a lot.
S-Stat, we're good?
It's always fun.
Thank you, S.
Thank you.
You said that, did you? Are you going to be saying that in a minute or not?
And this is the first budget we haven't had COVID hanging over our heads either.
This is, I mean, this is-
This is like an old, yeah, this is like, this is like the old time, this is like the old time budgets.
Proposed rate changes for parks, the Greens at Hamilton Run Golf Course and parking. And Erin Daighy, Director of Public Works is already at the table.
How you doing?
Where's Amy?
She's here for support.
She's staying wait, yeah, her support's way back there.
Case I need her, she's going to come out in case we, uh, get too, too far, too far in the weeds in here. Yes, uh, continuing on the, uh, budget theme here. Um, yeah, during the budget process, staff and I looked at, um, tweaking a few numbers here and there's no major changes here. Just a few things we want to go through. Apologize for the amendment. There's a lot of information here. There probably could have been a lot more. Uh, yeah, sorry, but, uh, so let me just walk down through those. We'll start with parks. Um, as you know, there's a new restroom that's being built over by the train hub. In the train hub, the museum and the train is actually in a fenced in area. And so when somebody wants to rent that pavilion, they can rent a pavilion or just they can rent a pavilion and go to the museum. And so there's some fees there. And so we're looking at bumping that fee up by, by twenty five dollars. And on the second page, you can see that it just goes from, uh, there's a two hundred fee, it goes to two twenty five, a hundred to one, to one twenty five and three hundred to three twenty five. And really what all these changes are about is, as we all know, our expenses are going up, whether it's labor, fuel, materials, whatever it is. And so we're just trying to bump these up a little bit to help cover some of those, uh, some of those expenses. Um, so again, the train hub now has a new restroom, uh, so we think the, the pavilion can be rented more often and will be rented more often. And so for, so therefore it doesn't generate a lot of revenue, but the twenty five dollar fee will just help bump that up a little bit. Um, the second item in parks had to do with pavilions. Um, we're looking at going from sixty five to seventy five. Uh, the current rates in the county is a, as a comparison, for residents is seventy five, for non-residents is ninety. And so we just want to charge flat fee. We just want to go from sixty five to seventy five on that fee. And then the final item in the, in the, in the parks has to do with the University Plaza. So Plaza is becoming increasingly more popular with events. And the rates that were put in for a special event guide that we put together, what, two or three years ago? Um, the fees went anywhere from zero to seventy five. It depend, and it was like for so many hours and if it was free to the public, it was just, it was just kind of a convoluted scale. And most people were renting it for a few hours or renting it for an event. And so we're proposing that we just charge a hundred dollar fee for each day you're going to have an event. So if you have a one-day event, you know, a Friday afternoon, it's a hundred bucks. If it's a two-day event, it's two hundred and so on. Um, and that just helps cover again costs for staff going down and maintaining it. The grass is getting worn out, anything we have to replace, things like that. So generates a little bit of revenue. Looking at our events for twenty twenty-three, there's easily ten to fifteen events, um, that are non-city events. We wouldn't charge ourselves obviously, but we, we charge others. Anybody that's already has an event planned, even if it's later in the year, this wouldn't apply. For example, Chris Kendall's already set up for December. We wouldn't go back and charge him. This would only be after July one. And so a lot of the events that are already set for this year wouldn't even be charged this fee. It would only go in effect July one and if they schedule anything after July one, then we would start charging the fee. So nobody, a lot of people wouldn't even be affected in this, this year, okay? So that's, that's in parks so far. Any questions on that? Okay. The most complicated one here is the Greens at the golf course. And probably the easiest thing to look at is the very last page, which is this chart. It looks like this. And so then you can see what the current rate is, what we're proposing, and then some comparisons. It's, it's somewhat tough to compare these to other golf courses because every course is a little bit different. Um, but we tried to run the fees and, uh, Black Rock Course is an eighteen-hole. South Mountain, Woodbrier are nine-hole courses like ours is, and Maple Run is an eighteen-hole. And so they all have their own amenities and difficulties and that sort of thing as far as, uh, for a player. And so as you can see, what we're trying to do is, is just bump up all the rates by, you know, a dollar or two. Um, the, the highest is on a weekend or holiday and we want to get that from five dollars from like thirty-two to seventy, or thirty-seven. We didn't change any of the season passes. They stay the same. Uh, there's only usually about, you know, twenty-five to thirty people that you can get a season pass. I know that's been controversial in the past, so we just thought we'll just leave that alone and just kind of bump up the other fees to, again, um, raise some revenue there. It won't raise a ton of revenue, um, but it certainly helps going towards that. Currently, the, the general fund puts in about, um, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. The next couple of years, that's going to go to about two hundred some and eventually probably hit around three hundred thousand dollars a year. The general fund will have to go to support, um, the golf course. Um, so again, this is just tweaking the numbers to try and bring up the revenue a little bit.
I'm a little, the only part that I'm uncomfortable with at the golf is the senior increase.
Okay.
I would like to, I'm not interested in increasing that particular. It's just me.
Was there any increase last year or was that the year before?
I think, uh, let me see here. Yeah, I think it's been a while. Yeah, I figured this would be the one we'd probably get the questions on and stuff, but, um,
Yeah, I, I-
Yeah, again, this is just a proposal. It's, it's, um, it's your option. We don't have to raise anything. We can raise some of them. Um, we're just trying to keep pace with expenses as best we can.
I understand that pace with expenses, so I would just rather see the seniors kept it the way that, at the, that's just me.
Okay, so don't change the seniors, but all the other rates are okay?
I'm okay with raising the rates for the other, I mean, it seems to be on par. I won't be here all night, um, with the other courses, so.
Okay, is that the consensus I'm hearing? Cause these rates like for parks and stuff is just by administrative order. This is pretty simple to change these rates. The only one that would be diff, uh, a little more involved is the, um, is the parking, which we'll get to in a second. That has to be changed by ordinance. And so that's, again, not easy enough to do, but we okay on this one?
It was just, I don't know.
Those rates are steel too. That course is in just unbelievable shape.
Staff does a great job. Absolutely, no question about it.
Yeah, what Shelley said. Still just two.
You all good?
Yeah. Go, get up while you can.
I got one more to go, so I'm still here.
Good?
What's he gonna tell me? Don't tell me.
Gee, nod of the head.
Jesus, please.
All right.
Do you act like you've never done this before?
Can't eat or one of them are both like.
No, I was imagining like, uh, cause I've been to all of these, so imagine like, you know, you're like, each one is its own thing. Like, you know, we have irrigation system, you know, Woodbrier doesn't, you know, and so you,
Right.
Woodbrier plays a little longer, ours doesn't. So, yeah, every course has its own and it's hard for me to sit here and go, this one should be this amount and that one should be that amount.
I, I agree. I agree.
I think it's pretty comparable though, so.
Yeah, we're so, and so on that chart, you can see we're staying in the same ballpark. We're trying to, you know, we can't price ourselves out of it. I mean, it gets to a point where you, where you price it to a point where you lose golfers too.
Right.
Um, so again, we're just, we're just trying to keep pace.
When expenses go up and that's just the way it is unfortunately, so.
All right, so we'll change rates other than the seniors. So in parking, I'm only asking for one thing here, um, for now. For parking, I'm just looking, and this is not about revenues honestly. This is about, the issue that we're finding is, is that, um, over half of the parking citations that we write every week or since July one of twenty twenty-two are for park, uh, sweeping, street sweeping. One of the things we found out during COVID is during that time, we, we stopped doing enforcement. And we stopped doing enforcement, nobody moved. And so we couldn't sweep the streets. And so one of the important things of stormwater is street sweeping. We collect, I have in here on average, you know, in the last three years, three hundred and eighty-eight tons of debris off the streets. And so we can't do that if cars are parked along the street. And so, um, the fee is fifteen. If you don't pay within ten days, it goes to, I think, twenty and then to twenty-five. And so we're proposing this be at twenty. If you don't pay in ten days, it goes to thirty and after thirty-five, or after thirty days, it goes to forty. That's the only fee we're asking to change at this time is on this enforcement. And mainly about encouraging people to move their car so we can do the street sweeping. One of the things we thought about, and I don't know how many people are really doing this, but if you park in the street downtown and you don't move your car four times in a month and you get a fifteen dollar ticket at sixty bucks, you can buy a parking pass for the, for the lot for fifty-four. And so I'm sure some people are like, yeah, for a couple more dollars, I'll just leave my car. But at twenty dollars you don't pay, now it's eighty dollars. And now it's like, eh, I'm not going to think twice about making move my car. So it's a small change and honestly, I hope most people just move. I'd rather just move than, than taking them. Cause it slows the process down and, yeah, so. But as far as rates, um, we are going to have to come back and revisit that because of the, of the, of the, um, under the parking deck. We got to figure out what we're going to do there. Right now, the new bed deck, um, will hopefully be open probably in May, April, May of next year. We don't know when the stadium's going to open. Um, but we still have a little bit of time here to figure out if we want to change rates, whatever that is. And if there's, it's going to be a different, right now we have a special event rate of five dollars, which we only ever use for Blues Fest and August Timberfest. Will we change that because of this new multi-use facility? Or, you know, how do we want to do that? Is it for all the decks or one de, you know, so I think there's a lot there to unpack. Um, Michelle and I have talked about it several times, which I think we'll just have to come back on that one and think about that one a little bit, a little bit further. That was too easy tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Administrator.
All right, I got a few things here, Mayor, since Councilman Bruchi's not here, I'll go ahead and do them all. Get the snake eye from him. Uh, the first is, uh, enjoy a chance to play like the masters with a nine-hole par three tournament hosted by the Greens at Hamilton Run this Wednesday. Entry fee covers all fee, and when, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow. Uh, entry fee covers all fees and lunch will be provided. The first annual master, the Greens Golf Tournament, uh, will start at one o'clock, the shotgun start. So, uh, again, that's tomorrow, the fifth. Secondly, Jonathan Hager House opens this weekend to the season, offering German Easter tours. Uh, drop in for a tour on Fridays and Saturdays from ten AM to four PM, April seventh, eighth, fourteen and fifteen. Tours of the historic, unique town founder and now we know first mayor of Hagerstown's.
We've known that.
Uh, home begins on the hour, no appointment necessary. The last tour of the day starts at three PM. Standard admission rates apply. Third, uh, the City of Hagerstown will be hosting the first of four community yard sales in the stalls of Fairgrounds Park at five twenty-one North Cannon Avenue. All seventy-two stalls have been rented. Uh, so you should get a wide variety of items to come and buy. Come early and get a good deal. Sales start at seven and end at two. Uh, Manifest, M-A-N-N-A-Fest is a free community event to be held this Saturday in University Plaza. Come for the music, dance, art and food. The events begin at one PM and end at five. Uh, oh, don't have to say that. Uh, and lastly, city offices are closed on Friday, uh, in observance of Good Friday. Happy Easter, everybody, and we are starting, uh, what I think may end up being one of the busiest spring, summer and falls, uh, for events in Hagerstown that we have seen in a long time, so.
I just want to say today, we had homeschoolers visit City Hall to learn about government and to learn, to get a tour. And Councilmember Burnett and I had the privilege of hosting them and, and talking about a lot of things. And while it was entertaining and exciting and fun, I have to thank staff because I neglected to tell them that all these homeschoolers were coming in. So I would go into the different departments with about, I don't know what, six of them? And just say hi and they were extremely gracious and very accepting and, uh, surprised. So thank you very much for, uh, going along with one of my ideas that I didn't tell anyone about, so, thank you. And thank you.
We're used to that.
Thanks, now. And thank you, Tiara. Appreciate your support. And the mayor also made an appearance, so much appreciated. Thank you.
Councilwoman Burnett?
No, yeah, thank you, Shelley, for the invitation to tour with busy, energetic kids. Um, even one kid called Paul Falk Dad.
Yes.
Because his dad's name, Paul as well, so he kept saying, I want to go see my dad.
I want to go, yeah, he said, can I go see my dad again?
No. Um, and one of the kids, they called the, um, one of the kids, they called the mayor because he has a lot of questions. So he just obviously gravitated to our mayor and to the gavel and to the big desk up there. So I also had to tie his shoe because he demanded it and also it was tripping hazard. So I don't know how far our liability papers work, but I wanted to trip. Um, but that was, it was, it was, it was fun. And then we also saw the guy walk around with snakes afterwards.
Yes.
Like, this is so Hagerstown.
That was the end.
This is perfect ending to the tour of homeschool kids tying shoes.
He probably paid the bill.
It was a good time.
He walked out and there was a snake charmer or something.
Yeah.
Welcome, welcome.
Councilman Alshar.
I don't have anything.
Councilman Sheller?
Uh, just, uh, thank you for all the hard work. I started going through this, uh, nice thick reading here. So thank you to staff and Scott, Michelle and everybody involved in putting that together. It's, it's a lot of hard work, so.
It's good stuff. Show off.
I just got it. I was like, oh, we're doing this.
I just want to thank, um, Mr. Blunt. He brought, um, six-year-old Caroline Blunt through today. Uh, she goes to Saint Mary's Catholic School, um, and she actually got her hair done and all of that to come through and meet the mayor. And then she got to meet all of the councils. So thank you guys as well. I think that is just amazing for a parent to reach out and say, I want to just bring my kid down to, to meet the mayor, meet whoever is, else is in the building. So that's awesome. More of that. Um, and so one of the things that I wanted to do is I want SpongeBob. They're going to do SpongeBob. I want him to come in here and do like one of the songs before the, um, the Barbara Ingram School of Art. Someone would like do one song, so, yeah, just like one, so. Just to think about crazy things to do. I just threw that out there, you know, for the staff to think about.
She was just saying I want to do SpongeBob. She didn't connect.
I know.
Bispa and we were like, what do you?
Where we going? Where we going?
I gotta keep it interesting for Chief. He likes, he likes this type of stuff. Yeah, I keep it interesting for Chief. He likes this kind of stuff.
Oh, doesn't he?
This is his favorite part.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, all the foolishness. Um, then, I'd like to, I'd like to close with a quote. Um, it is National Poetry Month and I'm a poet. Um, and so I chose this quote. Uh, words have no power to impress the mind without the exquisite horror of their reality. And that's Edgar Allan Poe. And with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Hello and welcome to Council Wrap. I'm Wes Decker, joined by Michelle Hepburn, the Chief Financial Officer of the city, and the Budget and Accounting Manager, Brooke Garver. Welcome aboard. I know this is a time of year, I think, where, you know, you don't necessarily exhale, but there's a lot of work that's been put into the budget up to this point in time. And now from here, it's sort of like budget school is in session for the next several weeks in your presentations to Mayor and Council, and for everyone else to sort of learn how you've gotten to where you've gotten at this point with the budget. And obviously, it needs to be a balanced budget first and foremost. And then some of the discussion within the presentation this evening was about the fact that there is no tax increase, yet taxpayers could see an increase on their property tax bills, if I have that correct. So can you sort of talk a little about that and why that could be the case for some, anyway?
Sure. And do you want us to back up and just take a moment to how we got here?
Sure, yeah.
As you...
Yeah, yeah. And this is a difficult thing, and it's difficult for me, because I try to come at this all the time from the taxpayer's standpoint of what is important to me to learn out of this, because there are so many things. I mean, right, right, here's the book, right, right here it is. And people can go online and they can look at it there. But at the same time, to try to pick out highlights, because they fall within different components of the budget, too. So that's another difficult thing. So I was kind of focusing in on, like I said, just on that no tax increase, yet there is the potential for seeing an increase on the tax bill.
Right. So I think for just a minute, and we're going to come back to that, that tax question. Just, just to kind of get a picture, it is a large document. It is a, it's a lot of information when we produce the budget. And you talked about, can we exhale? So we started in November, and we meet with managers, and we talk about where their current year, in the year that we're in right now, fiscal year 23, what their trends and how they're comparing to the current year budget. And then the month of December, staff starts compiling and working, not just every single department, but also within my department, because there's things that my department helps focus and actually build. And then January, we do...
We meet with all departments for capital improvement projects. And then we have a second round of meetings for operating expenses. And we kind of got to go back and forth, taking into account Mayor and Council's, you know, strategic plan, the department's wants and needs, and kind of go from there.
And then the goal is that by the very first week in February, that we can get to this concept of balance, because I feel like you stated a lot of things in your opening statement, and balanced, and balanced budget. So a lot of people are going to say, wow, but you talked about all these, either a big surplus or a big deficit in, in all these other funds. A balanced budget means keeping the revenue and the expenses as close to zero or a plus, it can't be a negative.
Okay.
And the governmental funds, specifically in the general fund. It does not mean that the electric, water, and wastewater funds have to be at zero. So a lot of people sometimes get that confused and sometimes feel like if we bring a deficit, we say we've got a balanced budget, and they say, oh, but you're not. The balanced budget side is on the largest fund, the general fund, right? Which, again, is primarily funded with taxpayer dollars. So just to come back to taxes overall, in the state of Maryland, what happens on both residential, residential and commercial properties is the State Department of Assessment and Taxation reassesses your property every three years. So several of us this evening mentioned how we were in the first year of our triennial assessment. It just simply means that last December, people, the S-Stat office mailed out notices, and it would have went out to all taxpayers, right, or should have. And it would, it would be, here's a memo, and it would say, your prior assessment, your new assessment. So you receive that back in December, but no changes actually occur until July. So the State Department of Assessment and Taxation says, here's the value. Here's how much your property is worth. And then what the city of Hagerstown does, so the state will send us a file. And then what, what the city does is it looks at how much total expenses that we have. You know, we have over 37 million, how much we need on the revenue side, how much are other smaller components of revenue we're going to generate? They are easier to estimate.
Okay.
So then the last thing we can do is, and the only thing we can do, is establish what the tax rate will be. So in other words, ours is 1.002 for all real estate properties, again, real estate only, minus apartment complexes right now. However, and for simplicity's sake, let's just say it's an even dollar.
Okay.
Just simply means that for every thousand dollars that they assessed your value for, we're going to apply a dollar.
Okay.
And that's how the bill is generated.
All right.
So what happened is, the first year of our triennial is next year. They came through, the state department came through, based on current market conditions. Not just market conditions, but the housing market. It's sometimes driven by real estate market and what people are paying for the houses. It can sometimes be impacted slightly by interest, but not always. But, so they take all that into consideration, and they give us, you know, the file and information, and we apply the tax rate. And then what happens then is in February, after we're balanced, February 14th, we always get a notice. And what the State Department of Assessment and Taxation does is they say, okay, if you received 30 million last year, then their calculation is, then you're only going to need to receive 30 million next year. That means this is your new rate that you could charge. And in most times, in most recent times for us, it has been the opposite, meaning the market values are lower, so we could increase, and we don't. So, yes, two different things that go into play into your overall tax bill. So what your house is assessed for by the state multiplied by the rate that the city... And the city is not going to recommend a tax rate increase. That will stay the same, but because your value in overall market has increased, then the, then on average, the total amount that you pay will too. But there's a 5% cap that we do on the residential side. So if it was a large increase, and it's happened in a few areas, not a lot, hopefully, but it's capped so that there will be no residential homeowner increase over that amount in the first year, and they spread it out over a three-year to help better.
So, so is, is S-Stat, the city of Hagerstown's friend right now?
I don't, I don't know. They are a great state agency. We work really well with our local offices. Our local offices oftentimes don't have the same resources that they did years ago. And they have also, you know, had to change their methodology in a way that they do things since COVID. And it's, and it's hard, because, you know, we get along so well. So when they're giving me bad news, I don't want to say that they're not my friend.
Sure, sure. No, yeah, I understand.
They can, but yes, they definitely like it whenever they can give us the reports. And then...
Yeah, and, and, and for me, it seems like for a homeowner, as it relates to their assessments, it's almost, it, it's very similar to getting an appraisal, because it's almost like all of those things have to come together. When you get an appraisal, you, you want your house to come back higher. With this, you don't necessarily want that, because that means you have to pay more in taxes. But at the same time, that's good for your home to be worth more in general, because if you go to sell it, obviously, you get more out of it. So that, that makes sense in, in that respect. I, I think something else that I, that I heard in, in the presentation, I jotted down a bunch of different notes here, but one of the things has to do with ARPA, which obviously you've been dealing with now for the last couple of years. There is still some funding that needs to be allocated, needs to be spent. Can you talk a little about that, where we are right now, and then what the deadline is for spending those funds?
So the deadline, funds need to be either spent or allocated by December 2024.
Okay.
We received 20.4 million in total. As of June 22, we had spent 4.3 million. We were projecting to end this year at an additional 3.9, and then in FY '24, we have 9.1 million allocated. So December 2024 reaches into FY '25 a little bit, so we still have some time, but it is a priority right now.
And how...
You'll see it mentioned probably every week
Okay.
as we go through the budget presentations.
And, and I do want to say, because we will be talking more in depth and be doing a update for Mayor and Council in the month of April to concentrate on our ARPA funding. So in the budget, we say the 20.4, and people quickly do the subtraction when the numbers that Brooke just did, and they say, oh, there's 4 million. When we come back and we sit with council, it's not because they haven't allocated as part of their bigger plan, they have, but there's certain things like 500,000 for mental health services. Because when we prepared all this, we don't have contracts in place, and we don't know how or where that's being spent. It's not actually reflected in our budgeted dollars. However, the Mayor and Council have already came up with an allocation plan. So there's very little remaining that's in revenue replacement that's not currently allocated. But our conversations now are going to be, because we're in almost the middle
Yeah.
of 2023, do we need to transfer or reallocate some of those funds to make sure that things are going to be completed and finished by that deadline?
What were some of the, the biggest challenges with this particular budget? Are there, you know, one or two things perhaps that stick out to you that, that made this one maybe a, a little more unique or a little more challenging in one aspect or another?
Funding for the fieldhouse?
Yes.
Okay.
By far and large. So, you know, everybody always says, there's no one item that's not a blessing and a curse. So we've got 20.4 million in ARPA funding. It's a blessing and a curse. It's wonderful, but then there's all these restrictions in the way that you can utilize them, and then there's these time constraints. So again, a blessing and a curse. So for the city of Hagerstown right now, and I think in preparing a fiscal year '24 budget, you know, Brooke is really hitting on it, hitting on it. With the current market, it is fabulous. We are seeing, you know, planning and annexations. We're seeing development, resurgence and development all around. But of course, for the city, in planning a third parking deck and the Hagerstown Fieldhouse, which is an indoor sports complex, those are very large infrastructure projects that the city is handling. And those individual dollars are probably more than we've done in infrastructure, and you add it all up in several years.
And then the timing of those, right on top of each other.
So I think that's what she's meaning. The Hagerstown Fieldhouse is definitely, was definitely one of the things that impacted everywhere, because it, how much funding are we going to get from outside sources? How much are we going to have to do in a bond issue? When we do the bond issue, then we have to recalculate the debt service. When we recalculate the debt service, we've got to recalculate the revenue. So it's, it's a blessing and a curse, and we're really excited about the possibility and the potential. Can't wait, and our partners, Eastern Sports Management and John Whack, are like very excited to get this project going. It's just, for us, we, you know, you apply for a grant, and that, which is great, but then you have to wait almost a year to hear if you're awarded, and you cannot start, in most of these grants, you cannot start your project until you hear if you're getting money. So it's, do we keep doing grant funding? Do we forward with the projects?
And, and that's my, my follow-up question on that, then. I mean, you don't have a crystal ball to know how all of this is going to play out. So when you're dealing with something as finite, as numbers, how in the world do you, I mean, do you come up with different scenarios and put those together? How, how do you work that out?
And we do, until we get balanced. And then honestly, because from the middle of March, from the middle of February to the end of March, right now, that paper copy book, that huge binder, is individual schedules. And every schedule, staff, Brooke and two staff primarily did that entire book. And so it takes a very long time to compile that. So you have to like, you have to have a, a place in the sand where you say, we can't make any more changes. And so we tried this evening, a couple of places, to make sure we mentioned one or two things that we felt had happened or had been approved and came back to Mayor and Council, since we drew that proverbial "here", we've got to do this snapshot and move forward. And then from there, once Mayor and Council review this, of course, because it's their budget document now from April until May until it's adopted, and any changes that they make or any other changes that occur, starting in July when it's effective, we will make budget transfers and we will make tweaks, we'll continue to adjust.
The, the 11 focus areas that you had to work on from the strategic plan, Brooke, how, how much does that help sort of chart the course with where some of this funding goes, knowing what the elected body has in mind? I mean, i- i- is that sort of a blueprint for some of what you do?
Yeah, definitely, definitely for the CIPs. Even in that section, we break it out, all of our capital improvement projects, we break it out by that strategic plan. So, yeah.
And we, and we try to then, because some of, some of the initiatives, of course, are more operational, so it's really hard to put a dollar value to, so that's why we do it on the capital side. But again, it is, and with the current strategic plan, it was a little bit more specific. And when I say specific, it literally listed individual things and projects in very specifically, like the park, the indoor sportsplex, that type of thing, versus, you know, grow the community and events.
Right, right, right. They, they weren't, they weren't ambiguous at all. They were really spelled out. Okay, here's exactly what we want. And, and that was kind of my question, was how much does that help when you know exactly what they're going for, instead of, again, trying to figure out exactly what that is, you know? Instead, you're, you're pretty much told.
Yes, which is very beneficial, especially when it's very large projects again. And it helps all of the individual directors and the leadership and the department managers, right? As they help to develop and think of what they need to request and put in the requests for the next five years.
I know this is a, a difficult question, but you're used to dealing with difficult things, obviously, as we've outlined here. You know, what, what is, what are some of the takeaways for a taxpayer from this budget? And again, I know there are so many different components, so many different areas, things like that. But i- i- if someone's watching this, they, they watch the meeting, they're following up by watching this, what, what are the things that they should know about this particular budget that you feel sort of stands out right now?
I think, I think, again, the largest is, there is a estimated anticipation that the, the market value of real estate and property has, has increased. We are maintaining and keeping the tax rate flat and consistent with the current rates. Above and beyond that, across, not just in this general fund, but across the entire city of Hagerstown, there has been no staffing increases. So again, we, we didn't come back and, and put in a bunch of new requests. We've maintained staffing levels at where Mayor and Council has already approved. And then as things occur, then they would have to be individually brought back. The large projects by, by...
Right, I was going to say, the exciting projects coming.
Yeah, and, and I think for taxpayer, one of the things that, that makes this easier is that those are things that are tangible, things that you can see, things that you can, you know, you, you can physically look at, say, I, I see this in the works, and, and I've understood how this has gotten to this point. I've heard this throughout council meetings, I've, I've heard this, you know, as it comes to fruition. So at least from that standpoint, it, it's not so nebulous.
Right. And, and I think, you know, we focus so much, and we've talked about the Hagerstown Fieldhouse, but in general, I would say capital projects across this whole budget are like one of the, the largest things. So large projects for the city of Hagerstown, the general fund area, also for parking. But we can't, we, we can't neglect that water and wastewater have large projects as well that would impact capacity, could help, right, with a, a lot of different things. And so between new pump stations for the wastewater fund and looking at...
The less glamorous things, but completely necessary.
They are all less glamorous, but even when you go and you look at the electric fund, and they have, you know, 2.5 million or something in capital, and everybody's like, oh, in the overall context. But that is huge compared to what they typically see, and a lot of theirs are driven by development. So again, I, I, I think staffing levels, maintaining a lot of big projects anticipated throughout the city and all the funds, it's a good time to be in the city.
Yes, it is. Yeah, and, and as I said earlier, budget school will be in session the next several weeks, and that will go through, I believe you said, the middle of May?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we have to look forward to. I think it's all, it's always very interesting to me when we get to this point, and it is budget season, because I feel like, on one hand, I become educated. On the other hand, I'm like, oh my gosh, how did they ever make that happen? So, you know, my, my hats off to everything that you do in, in finance and accounting to, to make this come to fruition. I, it is not an easy job at all. It's not even easy to explain. It's not even easy to pick out some of the highlights, so...
I would like to give some credit to Jeff Lear and Heidi Herman, too. There's our senior accountants who helped tremendously.
Yeah, I, I know it's a...
Those are three rock stars.
Yeah, it, it's a major team effort, and as you said, it, it starts with, you know, all of the directors providing their information, and then you... And, and, and I feel like you, you never truly get a break with this, because about the time that you get one completed and it's balanced, and then it's passed...
It's year-end, and then it's audit, and then it's back to budget season.
Right, right.
But I would be remiss, I do just want to say that I'm very thankful for the staff and the accounting and finance staff, and our directors and our department leaders for getting their information to us in a timely manner, in all that they do in building this document. But I, too, wish to thank our Mayor and Council administration, because many throughout, we keep talking about, you know, the COVID pandemic, but many throughout fiscal year 19, 20, 2021, the, our group has been so flexible and really great leaders, knowing that what we put together, the estimates at that time, you want to talk about nebulous. Those are all over the board, and it was hard to, to really get more specific. But their support in what they do with what they provided in the strategic plan and, and offering clear direction helps do what we have to do. And the fact that they incorporated, you know, community survey and what they hear is the wishes from our communities, the top plans, all of it. So again, exciting job.
Yeah, it has to feel better to sort of get back to standard operating procedure to some degree. And, and again, just for reference for anyone who's watching, where can they go on the website to look all of this up? And, and, you know, I mean, a little, a little light reading right here, but maybe it's not quite as daunting on the website.
Right now, it's on the front page under the spotlight section. But under government and finance, you can find all of those year-round.
Well, it was a pleasure, just sort of breaking off the tip of the iceberg on this. Look forward to more coming up in the upcoming council meetings over the next month plus. And again, terrific work on this, and always great to, to receive a little insight from those who, who know, because I, it, for me, it, it's, it's a lot to digest, that's for sure. So again, thank you for your time here this evening. And that will do it for this edition of Council Wrap. For now, that's a wrap. We'll see you next time.